Good evening. Welcome to the April 23, 2024 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. If the city clerk could please take the role.
Flom.
Here.
Builo.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Esslinger.
Here.
Mugawar.
Here.
Seven present.
The invocation tonight will be led by Councilmember Flom.
Thank you very much. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
And tonight, we have students from Oshkosh North High School here to help lead us in the pledge. We have Lacy and Elsa. Come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to turn around? The camera's up there. That way you can get a good picture. All right. Well, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. Again, we have Lacy and we have Elsa here from Oshkosh North High School. So thank you for coming tonight, leading us in the pledge. A couple of questions for you. Tell us your name, maybe grade at North, favorite subject, or even a favorite teacher you want to give a shout out to.
My name is Lacy. I'm a sophomore at Oshkosh North, and my favorite teacher is Mr. Webber, who is our community's teacher.
My name's Elsa. I'm a freshman at Oshkosh North, and my favorite teacher is Ms. Hop. She's my GM teacher.
I have one follow-up. I got one more question. I didn't ask this one in advance, but I'm pretty sure you can be able to handle it. Community is at Oshkosh North. It's a pretty cool program. I know a little bit about it, but would one of you want to give a few seconds on what communities is at Oshkosh North?
So our community's program at North includes leadership, English, and history. And basically, what their goal is, is instead of just quizzing us on information that we'll probably forget in the future, they like to include the community. And we like to instruct ourselves and see, expand our learning. So we're doing things that actually help our community. So right now, we're working on a project with helping people who are affected by war crimes. So we're learning about wars and how people are affected, but we're also doing something to help and having a fundraiser.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, thank you very much. Have a great night. Now, the community's program at Oshkosh North is a great program that the schools run over at North and do lots of good work in the community. So that was nice that they were here. We have a few proclamations this evening, and then we'll have an introduction of staff as well. I'll read it up here, and then we've got a couple of people to accept a few of the proclamations. First one is Williams Syndrome Awareness Month, May 2024. "So whereas Williams syndrome is a rare genetic condition that is characterized by medical and cognitive issues, including cardiovascular disease, developmental delays, and mild to moderate intellectual disability, and occurs when a person is missing more than 25 genes from a specific area of chromosome seven. And whereas most cases of Williams syndrome are not inherited, instead affecting people sporadically, regardless of family history. And whereas this condition affects as many as 30,000 individuals in the U.S. And whereas the Williams Syndrome Association is a nonprofit organization founded in 1982 and serves as the most comprehensive resource for people and families living with Williams syndrome, as well as doctors, researchers, and educators. And whereas to generate awareness about Williams syndrome and raise funding for critical WSA programs and initiatives, the WSA has organized May as Williams Syndrome Awareness Month, which includes awareness efforts all across the United States. And whereas the City of Oshkosh recognizes the families and friends of those with Williams syndrome and commends their compassionate work to educate people across our state and nation about this rare disorder. Therefore, I, Matt Mugawar, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Williams Syndrome Awareness Month in the City of Oshkosh." This evening, we have Barb Nelson here to receive that proclamation.
Brinkley is our 13-year-old granddaughter, and she was diagnosed with Williams syndrome at the age of 11 months. And like it says, it's a developmental issue. And part of it, which doesn't say in the proclamation, is everyone who is born with Williams syndrome has a very outgoing personality. We took, we here at Brinkley's Boutique, I should have probably started with that. My husband and I own Brinkley's Boutique at 419 North Main, and we took the B from Brinkley and made it our motto, "To be kind the way she is." And we create that gesture in our store location. And in the month of May, we are doing major fundraising, and we've raised as much as $5,000 for the month of May, and then we donate that to Williams syndrome. In addition to the proclamation, the City of Oshkosh is turning the River Bridge lights in the color of Williams syndrome. So we thank you for that, doing that for us. It's awareness for Williams syndrome and everyone who is born and diagnosed with it. Thank you.
Next, we have May 2, 2024, is being declared Day of Prayer in the City of Oshkosh. Whereas the Continental Congress first declared a national day of prayer in 1775, making national days of prayer a longstanding American tradition. And whereas the national day of prayer became law in 1952, when unanimously passed by Congress and signed by President Harry S. Truman. And whereas May 2, 2024, marks the 73rd Annual National Day of Prayer. And whereas the theme for 2024 is "Lift Up the World, Light Up the World." And whereas millions of people from coast to coast will create a huge wave of prayer illustrating the unity of God's people over the circumstances facing us during this crucial time for our nation. Now, therefore, I, Matt Mugawar, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 2, 2024, as a day of prayer in the City of Oshkosh. And I encourage our fellow citizens to join in prayer, seeking God's grace and asking Him to touch the minds and hearts of our people and our leaders, so that we may meet the challenges that lie before us with courage, wisdom, and justice. This evening, we have Art Sullivan here, on behalf of the organization, to accept the proclamation.
First, may I say thank you to the mayor and to the council for the proclamation. It is the 73rd Annual National Day of Prayer, and the event here in Oshkosh will be next Thursday, May 2. It starts at about noon, right outside the city hall here at the flagpole, runs till about 12:45. And it is a day when we hope to bring unity in the community. While it is fair to say, and it would be truthful to say, that religious fervor can and does create division, prayer can be a source of unity. And we hope it's a source of humility and hopefulness to not just Oshkosh, but to our country and to this world. So I thank you for the proclamation today.
And one last final one. We have Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels who supply continuity to our democratic society. And whereas public employees serve in areas such as health, education, public safety, the arts, the environment, finance, public infrastructure, community planning, human rights, recreation, and more. And whereas the public employees of the City of Oshkosh are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of professional excellence, creativity, skill, and customer service. And whereas the efficiency of government relies on public employees and volunteers, who provide services in the quality and quantity required and expected by the public. And whereas the City of Oshkosh recognizes the generous contributions of time and talent by public employees and the importance of the services they render. Now, therefore, I, Matt Mugawar, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5 as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Oshkosh, and call upon all citizens to recognize and express their appreciation for the important contributions of public employees throughout the city and around the world. And I think City Manager Roloff is accepting this one.
On behalf of all the city employees, I want to thank the mayor for the proclamation. I think it means a lot for our employees to hear that appreciation for the work that they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Introduction of staff. I think Public Works Director Robbie is taking the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, following that proclamation. It seems fitting to be introducing you to a new member of our management team in Public Works tonight. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to our new Mechanics Division Manager, Dylan Rollo. Dylan has an Associate's Degree in Diesel Technology and has also studied Sociology and Psychology at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee. Dylan comes to us most recently from the town of Grand Shoot, where he's been a mechanic for almost two years. Prior to Grand Shoot, Dylan spent time working for Casper Truck Equipment, WEL Companies, Oshkosh Corporation, and a private trucking company. I'm excited to welcome Dylan to our team. I believe his energy and excitement will re-energize this portion of the Department of Public Works and will be a great asset for us in the transformation that is taking place within the Field Operations Division. So with that, Dylan, if you want to say anything?
Hello. It's nice to meet all of you. I look forward to getting to know all of you and working further in the future and continuing to improve the city.
Well, welcome. It's a pleasure to have you. Public Works facility over there has an interesting role. They touch a lot of the different departments throughout the city. So your involvement over there will have a wide range and a big impact. So welcome.
Thank you.
Just note, Mr. Mayor, another Grand Shoot person, just saying.
How many are we up to?
Three active.
I have no one registered for citizen statements to council, so we'll move on to consent agenda. I also have no one registered for that, so I will take a motion and a second of consent. So moved. Councilmember Larson.
That's just me, 24-211, I think is what I said. Yes, please pull, so I can vote present.
Sounds good. That's for the Winnebago Bicycle?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on consent? Seeing none, the clerk will take the roll on consent minus Resolution 24-211.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate seven.
Resolution 24-211, this is approve a special event, Winnebago Bicycle, to utilize Opera House Square, Sundial Area, for the Bike to Work Event Day, May 17, 2024. I'll take a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Larson, do you want to?
Sure. Yeah, I can clarify. I have a financial interest in that. That's my tenant, so I will be voting present.
There you go.
Sorry.
No, no, you're good. If there's no other discussion, take the roll on 24-211.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Present.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate six, one present.
Moving right along. We're going to go into pending ordinances. Ordinance 24-231, approve request to annex the city from the town of Oshkosh Valley Christian School. Plan Commission recommends approval. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Take the roll on 24-231.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate seven.
Ordinance 24-232, approve zone change from institutional district to institutional district with a planned development overlay at 4311 Jackson Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. So moved. Second. Discussion. Take the roll on 24-232.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate seven.
New ordinances. We have two of them this evening. No action is anticipated on either of these. Ordinance 24-233, approve zone change from institutional to two-flat residential 10 for the property located at 1333 East Street. Plan Commission recommends approval of that. Again, no action. That's the first reading. It'll be coming back next meeting. And ordinance 24-234, we have a zone change from suburban mixed-use to suburban mixed-use district with planned development overlay at 502 West Murdoch Ave. Plan Commission recommends approval. Same thing, no action is anticipated tonight. Come back next council meeting. Moving on to new resolutions. Resolution 24-235, appropriate ARPA funds for 2024 projects in lieu of issuing debt. Take a motion. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. We're flying right along. He'll take the roll on 24-235.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate seven.
I'm going to be honest, I missed an opportunity to bring up our new Finance Director to speak on that one. She's smiling in the back. We'll find a way to get her up for the next council meeting, I'm sure. Resolution 24-236, approve determination of necessity to acquire partial land acquisitions at 3098, 3105, and 3123 Jackson Street and 370 West Furnow Ave. Plan Commission recommends approval. Take a motion and a second. So moved. Second. Discussion on the determination of necessity. I see none. Take the roll.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate seven.
Resolution 24-237, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for outdoor and indoor storage areas at 4311 Jackson Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. Take the roll on 24-237.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate seven.
Final action item of the evening, Resolution 24-238, approve conditional use permit amendment for an outdoor storage use at 2840 Oregon Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, he'll take the roll on 24-238.
Flom.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Curate seven.
So next up, we move into the council discussion, direction to City Manager and future agenda items section of the agenda. We have council discussion and direction to staff. First thing up, from Councilmember Larson, third-party audit review of municipal additions to building code, municipal zoning, and signage codes. Councilmember Larson.
Sure. We got something exciting, right? That was way too fast. This is very much a starting point, of course, in introduction. From me, this is something that first got on my radar during one of the visioning sessions. I forget which one, but it came up in discussion at the time. And the question was, has this been done? And I don't know that we've done it, a third-party audit of code here, maybe ever, but it's been a minute. It gets done in-house, which is great. None of that is meant to be an affront to the people who do it, because it's well-done. But my thinking is, it is something that would be good to address, so that if we're going to do hard stuff, like look at the right kind of developments in new housing and new, that kind of, new things in general, it'd be nice to have a level playing field to start with and know that we're as competitive with surrounding areas as far as our code and ordinances go. So wanted to bring it here, so we could discuss it and see if there's any consensus to look further into it. Obviously, there's an expense. We don't know what that is yet, but it's not just me, it's about all of us. So I brought it here for us to talk about.
Councilmember Flom.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Councilman Larson's comments. I think an extra pair of eyes on this are healthy. It's no affront to city staff whatsoever. I think this is a good thing that the city should be doing every now and then, and kind of seeing, you know, how competitive are we in terms of our region and in the state, and if there's anything that we can do. So I support this. I support looking into this and seeing how much it would cost and the potential timeline for it, if nothing else, just to entertain the idea. So thank you, Councilman Larson, for bringing it up. I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to see what happens from here.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea. We definitely have to look at what that would cost and where the money would come from. I think, I know a lot of, like, our building code and some of the codes were really hamstrung about what the state does and state statutes dictate a lot of that stuff. But I think being able to have a third party come in and say, if our code is good, bad, or indifferent, is a good selling point for us. If we have the perfect code on the planet and they come in and say, your code is great, then I think it's a good selling point for developers, and people can stop telling us we're hard to develop them. But I think we're going to, maybe in this whole process, get a little bit of the gray area. We're going to find stuff that we do really well and stuff we don't do so well.
Councilmember Nichols, followed by Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that this is a good idea. I think the intermediate step here would be determining what our goals are as a city. I think that we have a perception problem in addition to maybe an actual problem. But I think identifying actual KPIs, actual metrics. In conversations with the city manager, I learned that we had a significant improvement in the number of same-day approvals for building permits, for example. And that's something that we just haven't advertised as a city, but it's something we are doing well. But I think identifying what those metrics are at the city level, determining at the council level what we want them to be, and then auditing both our code, but also our processes, to say, how can we improve from 85% to 90%, or 90% to 95% for certain things. So I think my only addition here would be, yes, I support an audit. I would like to add processes to the list of things we're auditing. But I would also like to determine, what are our metrics today? What are our goals in the future? I think what gets measured gets improved. So I think that's what I'd like to start with. Thanks.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to applaud Councilmember Larson for bringing this forward. I view this as a very good thing. Many, many times, we compare ourselves to other cities with the things that we do and we don't do. And other cities compare us to them. And so sometimes we get criticized for different departments. And, you know, as someone that's in real estate, that doesn't do this on a day-to-day basis, quite frankly, I don't know if we're doing it good, bad, indifferent, or anywhere else in between. And so I see absolutely no problem with getting some professional individuals that do this for a living. So I can be better educated, the other six members of the council can be better educated, and maybe even the staff somehow can learn a thing or two, or pick up some tricks of the trade to make it better for the citizens and for the contractors. So again, Councilmember Larson, I applaud you for bringing this forward, and I completely support this.
Think you've gotten some direction.
Yeah, Ms. Nyforth was taking some notes, and we did have some discussions with some of the new council members in particular, because this was something that they expressed. I think Councilmember Stevenson said, the building code is a little more rigid because that's defined. But I think the processes items that Councilmember Nichols brought up is something that is something we can certainly take a look at. We did a redo of our zoning code about, what, seven years ago?
In 2017, we did redo our zoning code. And since then, every time we create, like, a large plan, like our housing study, Imagine Oshkosh, we actually had them audit our zoning code. So we have, you have implemented a lot of changes that have come. So we have done smaller audits along the way, specific to our zoning code. And we are, as you know, constantly updating the zoning codes. It's a living, working document. So you just updated and approved quite a few signage updates. When we hear people, you know, keep saying the same things, you know, about, let's just say, blade sides, for instance, you know, we take note of that and we make those changes. So parking overlays and, you know, housing improvements and different things like that, those are all things that we have implemented. So we work with our local municipalities that surround us and see what they're doing. You know, we don't try to recreate the wheel sometimes. We like to see what they do. And, you know, Councilor Essner did say, you know, there are other communities that do come to us, so we actually share a lot of our information with the communities. So we do share it with each other to try to make it the best code we can and really meet the needs of what our community is asking for.
So I think we'll take all this input and just look and see if there's someone out there that provides a general type of service, but customize it for our specific needs. So appreciate the input.
I think I have some follow-up from Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Deputy Mayor Builo after that.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to reinforce what Kelly said, that I think you guys did do a really big update in 2017, and maybe a little bit of what Councilmember Nichols said, that I don't think a lot of people, it's a perception issue. I don't think a lot of people have caught on to some of the really good code that I think we've updated in some of those things. And obviously, codes can be indefinitely improved, so we don't want to, I always say, better, not perfect. But I think we can do this audit, and we'll get a little bit better. But I really want to pay you guys respect, and 2017, you did do a good job with that, so.
Deputy Mayor Builo.
And just what popped in my head is, I think my favorite part of this is the communication device that it can become to show our community, you know, when we pull up our strategic plan, effectiveness of the government is the middle of the little spokes that go out. And so we can show that, hey, we're willing to do the hard work to make sure that we are where we need to be, and we know that we, because we've done the hard work, that we are there, kind of like what Councilmember Nichols has said. So the thing I like best about this is that it can become just such a really good communication device that we can use.
Thank you.
Moving on, City Manager Roloff, ARPA non-infrastructure grant date. I think we had, there's an attachment in the agenda.
Yeah, I had staff take a look at all of our 51 ARPA applications. And like you see at the bottom of an article that might be on the web, that might identify a couple little key references. So I asked staff to go through all 51 into two to three different ones. So you may not get exactly 153 mentions here, but I think it's important to point out, say, you know, about the, anything that got five mentions or more. And so for those of you watching in the audience or at home, infrastructure came up as number one, and these are from non-infrastructure projects. So I think those were infrastructure projects for some nonprofits. Employment, childcare, which was brought up a good deal during the strategic plan process, our focus group mentioned childcare. Diversity, equipment, and workforce. Those are ones that got referenced five times or more, and you can see the other ones that were referenced. Yeah, the reason I wanted to bring it to you is because, you know, going through 51 applications is quite an endeavor. And we've sent out an email to all the applicants just saying, you know, we've got it, but now we have 51 applications, so please be patient. The challenge is that we still need to allocate these funds, and our goal is to try to get them spent by the end of the year. That'll obviously, the longer it takes for staff to bring these forward to council, that'll tighten up the window to get that done. But just wanted to give this to you. Welcome any input. I'm not giving you the actual applications. The applications are about, you know, four inches thick, so just full disclosure. But I thought it was important to see what some of these items were. And, you know, I'd say anything that was brought up during strategic planning, it's probably referenced in here one way or another. So welcome any thoughts or input that council may have on this topic.
Deputy Mayor.
Just wanted to say, I'm thrilled with our community to come out and put in 51 applications, and excited about that process that was able to garner that much enthusiasm from the community. So I know it's a big lift now to go through all those and rank them and score them and all that, but compliments to all of everybody involved in the process.
Couple of questions, and maybe, and then just one little comment. You may want to, actually, you could always bring up the Finance Director if you wanted. Dollars left, and if I remember right, 12, 12 and a half million for the total of your, the requests that we got, right?
Yeah, thank you. We received 51 applications totaling 12, over $12 million. Of the non-infrastructure allocation, there's about 2.350,000 left. So mathematically, there's about a 1 in 5 shot of success for your application. That's not to say we can't break it up, or, you know, not give the entire allocation, things like that. And so that'll be something that will end up following up with the applicants. The, as you saw from the previous item on the agenda with the ARPA for the infrastructure items, that we're down to a couple hundred thousand. But we're also going to go do a back audit, because there are some projects that we've done that have gone under budget, and so we'll probably have some funds left over that we'll put into something else. And Ms. Colmas and I have been talking about what types of things we might want to allocate those for. So you'll see those coming up fairly soon. But we're going back at the 23, 2023 projects to identify where we came up with a little more money on the table. Did I give you enough time to walk up, Julie?
Yes. I wanted to come up. I wasn't afraid to come up. I just, he was explaining it so well. I was like, just let him keep going. So, but if you have anything else, he's exactly correct that we're working with the departments to see which items that have already been approved by council are coming in under budget versus where they are in the process. So we have a better idea of what more we need to allocate and what more we need to bring to council.
Allocate, as Councilmember, excuse me, City Manager Roloff indicated, and just making sure that all council members are on the same page, allocate by the end of '24 requirement, but also then spend by the end of '25.
'26.
'26 is the spend. However, internally, we want to make sure However, internally, we want to make sure the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, so really having it spent by the end of '24 is ideal, and that also means the applicants have to do, they got to do their thing and have it done by the end of '24 to have that done.
Correct.
In terms of the scoring, the metric-based, the system, this is a system used before. Council was in support of it, previous council was. It's a good system. You've got something in place. We've used this before. It's proven itself out pretty well. I don't know if you want to chat on that a bit.
Well, the, yeah, we've done that, and the applicants were pretty savvy at listening at the work sessions because they scored really well. And so it may not just be, if you did it, it's one to, zero to 100, so pretty straightforward, sort of like school. There, most of these are Bs and above. I guess I'd use it as a school analogy. Most of these applications were B or better, and we did give bonus points, and there were several that got over 100 points. They clicked everything that they, that we asked of them, so they, and that's a good indicator of a good application. That does not make my job any easier. In fact, it probably, I'm just like, how could it be? And I walked through it with staff, and I was like, these are good applications. And so that's why I wanted to just give you an idea of some of the areas that were there so you get a flavor for those things. But I'm glad you asked a question about the points, because I don't think it's going to be, we allocate everything on the top points until we run out of 2.3. I don't think that's the right way to go. I certainly want to, I would strongly suggest that you take my recommendations only because it ain't going to be easy. It's going to be tough, but you still are the final say on this thing, and I think if you see the priorities, if we're missing a priority, that's why I wanted to give you this list, to give you a flavor of what the applications are, and you say, well, they may only be mentioned twice, and I'm just going to say seniors because it's about halfway down. It was referenced twice. But if you feel that there's some gap in the senior community, well, then the council is ever right to say, I think we need to look at that. So to the degree you see something, you know, certainly feel free to ask. I want to make you aware of everything, but I don't want to force you to go through 51 applications. Staff will do that legwork for you.
One last question, I promise. You intend to bring us a bulk recommendation, or are you going to kind of piecemeal it or a little bit of both?
Given the volume that we have, I think I'm going to bring you the whole 2.35 allocation, and then I think I'll have some in reserves. If you want to shift some things around, I got to give you, I have to, I have to give you that ability to exercise some discretion. Ultimately, that's your job on this one.
Okay. Any other questions on the topic? We'll look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Future workshops, councilmember Stevenson and Builo had brought this up last time, but we'll be having one on undergrounding utilities. Staff is working on that information and date to be determined. And then any follow-up or anything more I need to?
We're just going to be, we're going to be meeting with some of the other utilities because it's not just WPS. We had a great meeting with WPS, but it's a very complicated issue, and so we want to make sure that we're as thorough as possible with you.
Excellent.